Study session of September 28, 2021 is called to order. Carrie, could you do the roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Okay. Mayor Kevin Orsi.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Deidre Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
Councilmember Fees.
Here.
Councilmember Innesco.
Here.
Councilmember Bowe.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, our first study item is the 2022 budget. Budget Coordinator Don Quezme has information to share with us.
Can you hear me? I think we're unmuted.
We're in it. We're trying to share a screen.
So Terry's pulling up our documents.
Is that Terry with you?
Yes.
So Terry and Don here. They will share this presentation, so I'll start this off and then turn it over to Terry. So can you see the screen saying budget status?
Yep.
Okay. So then our agenda tonight, we'll talk about some of the budget calendar, the process, the revenue assumptions and the expense assumptions. Update on our FTE, including what our budgeted FTE is, our capital projects that are in the budget, our ARPA funding status and COVID contingency that we've been dealing with for a while now. During this whole budget process, we continue to follow the strategic goals that have been set by the city council and the directors and managers as they make budget additions and budget requests of all. And analyze that before they make their request to us to finance. So we build a budget using realistic, albeit conservative revenue assumptions and then match those expenses to our revenues. The decisions are made with our eye forward, looking forward for ongoing resources to fund the operations. One-time resources, including accumulated fund balance, are only budgeted for one-time expenses. The budget process again was challenging this year. Our general fund needs far more available, far more things than we currently found that we have the resources to fund. And all funds at this point are balanced with ongoing revenues, except for the funding of ongoing operations that when we can and when it's appropriate that we use fund balance for those. And we have an updated budget calendar, so right now we're sitting down at September 28th as our second study session. Next week, the proposed budget will be coming to council and there will be our public hearings that we have to follow. And with our end result that we need to reach is to have a balance of approved budget by the end of December. So we're hoping for either end of November or December 7th for the adoption of the budget. Then on our revenues, for the assumptions that we have used at this point, we have property tax with an increase of 1.15%. With 1% being the maximum, the statutory maximum that we can claim. And then 0.15 is the estimate on new construction. And the actual collections will always be based on what the county assessor collects. The sales tax at this point, we have a 2.1% increase that we're protecting by looking at history and the spend. The revenue has been strong and we're have budgeted, assuming that will continue. Being all tax, we just brought across the same budget, or budgeting the same amount as our 2021 year in estimate. So that is increasing some, but we'll base it on what we have been seeing collected. The city and non-city utility tax, we're budgeting a 1.9% increase. And based on with the anticipated rate increases, we'll also increase the taxes that are collected on those. Building permitting, just a small amount, but a $5,000 increase that we have in there. And the utilities revenue were are the increases are based on service fee changes and estimated actuals, less than your one-time revenues and the grants and so on. And now the revenue has been assumed on our current estimates. Then on the expense side, starting in our labor assumptions, the coal that we're using now is the what we're using during negotiations with our bargaining partners as the negotiations are taking on now with the labor groups. Healthcare, we have a 6% and that may change, but that's the data that we have at this point. Our Delta Dental's estimated a 4% increase. Per's actually had a decrease going into this next year of 2.72%, so that is helping our budget, of course. And other expenses, we are used, started with a 4% increase to our 2021 budget. So the base budget that directors and managers first worked with was that 2021 budget with a 4% add-on to create our base. And then they, within their funds and departments, they could move expenses around as long as they had a corresponding decrease so that they could move to the line items where they need the money. And now the next page is our updated FTE list. So this now back, now in 2022, we are projecting to be at 102.5 FTE, which would match our 2020 amount and 2021 with COVID, we made some custom positions. And we continue to analyze how many FTE that we need to do all the work we have to accomplish. And especially watching the general fund and the general fund, we have been able to still keep at this point lower than our pre-pandemic amount of FTEs. And that's kind of the section I was gonna cover and I'll turn it over to Terry unless his questions on this part.
I have a question. Right here.
Okay.
Okay, Kathy.
Back on page nine. It talks about.
We we haven't gotten to page nine yet.
Oh, excuse me. Well.
So Terry will be covering the rest of the pages from page eight forward.
Okay, well, there's a question, just a question about the city and non-city utility tax.
Oh, okay.
Hi, she's talking about, it's just nine on our list.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Can you explain city and non-city utility tax, what's involved in those?
I think Terry probably can answer that better than myself.
That would be like the the PDA excise tax, maybe so.
Yeah, so Councilmember McDowell, the non-city utility taxes are things like the PUD excise tax. City utility taxes are taxes on services, water, sewer, the services that we provide. So that's the distinction.
So is the non-city, does that have to do with the garbage company?
That is part of the mix, but it's not the only one.
Okay.
I have I have a question. We're basing this budget on the assumption that we're going to take advantage of the ad valorem this year. And I don't believe we've had that conversation as a council. With the hardships that are out there, I mean, it might seem we want to talk about waiving this year and not taking advantage of. The county hasn't done it now for the second year, so I think that maybe we should talk about that before we think about that 1.15% increase in property taxes. I don't know if we want to talk about that at a later date or.
Well, I think the, we can, council can certainly have the discussion now and not that you make a decision this evening, but provide us some direction as we continue to build the budget, that would be terrific. Without the 1% ad valorem, that will significantly impact our budget going into 2022. So if that's a direction that council would like to see us go, we would appreciate the direction as early as, as early as we can get it.
Do you have any idea how much that would impact?
Terry and Don, do you happen to have the numbers in front of you?
No.
I was working on a little bit today, the 1% I believe is maybe 20 to 30,000 increase because it's over 2 million that we would collect, just, you know, as the base. So the 1% increase would be, you know, just over, but then it's the 15. Yeah.
The 0.15.
0.15% added on for the new construction. So, and I do not, I requested information from the county assessors office today. And so I'm waiting for the reply back so we can get those numbers.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly provide you with the numbers tomorrow. First thing in the morning to let you know what the direct impact of that waiving that would be.
That would be great.
I would suggest that if council does decide to waive the ad valorem, that we bank that capacity rather than just waiving it outright, which allows us to retain the ability to collect that in a future budget. However, as we've discussed with our 10-year financial forecasts and with the other impacts of city budgeted funds, inflation this year is fairly high. And the 1% does not even begin to come close to what inflation is in a regular year. So the effect would be compounded over time. Not necessarily, I just want you to have that piece of information going forward, but not necessarily, you know, one side or the other. It's just a data point for you to make a decision.
Does anybody else want to talk on that? I have none. I think it's just that, you know, we have state and federal helping us. And maybe we should just help the people a little bit and the businesses that have suffered. It doesn't sound like it's that big. You know, everybody's suffering, we're suffering and so are the people who live in our city. That's my opinion.
But are we though, Eric? You know, I'm looking at unemployment rates right now. I'm looking at economic impact and everything is on the up. And we're looking at gross domestic product across the board. And are you seeing sales being dropped? And I mean.
I'm talking about restaurants and people that have struggled, that have lost their jobs or, you know. Your numbers don't show what a restaurant went through, I don't believe.
Well, I pulled the data and in Mason County as a whole and Shelton specifically, during the recession, we lost very few businesses. We gained some as well. So I think that, you know, we've taken a look at, you know, how we support on, you know, storm and whatnot. And I really want to have a deeper conversation about if we don't impose this tax this year, like Jeff was starting to talk about, then what does that mean for us? Because we have discussed this in that 10-year projection. And we have discussed what that impact is going to be looking like. And if we don't impose that this year, then I think that puts us on a skin for a while, for forever, actually.
Well, I don't think so. I think it's just us doing our part. But I'm just one person and there's six more of you, so.
Yeah, Deidre's got her hand in.
Yep.
Councilmember Peterson, did you have a question?
I was just gonna mention, as Megan did, that one of the things we've looked at a few times now is that 10-year forecast and where that gap is. And as a city, you know, we have a, we have limited options for new revenue besides increasing taxes. And the 1% as Jeff mentioned, doesn't begin to keep up with the inflation that we see and the cost of just doing our business at our core business level. But I agree with Eric's point that $30,000 over the course of the entire city budget. If that, let's use that number for the sake of argument, it's probably not a make or break. But if really what we're looking at is providing some assistance to folks during a hard time, maybe rather than completely waiving that, we look at taking that 30,000, 1% in and dedicating it into specific programs to help folks that are suffering rather than just say, you know, across the board, because some people have been hit differently than others. As Eric mentioned, restaurants specifically is one category, but they're not the only one. So I don't think it's an all or nothing sort of thing. But there's definitely a budget impact and until we actually see those numbers, it's hard to have an intelligent conversation about what the impact may be.
Megan.
I also wonder, you know, with like new construction and the tax on there, we're seeing already, you know, more housing starts and new construction happening. There's lots of conversations happening across town with developers and stuff. And, you know, I think that we also need to set ourselves for success in that space as well. And I think that if we don't impose that now, that we are going to miss an opportunity to bring more, like Deidre was saying, more resource to, you know, that small business infrastructure, that community service component, you know, I know we're going to be talking about homeless in here soon. We need, we need funds to be able to mitigate that homeless situation.
Anyone else have a comment? Where's Joe? Where's Joe? There he is. No comment, Joe?
Well, interesting. So as you guys all know, we've seen not, well, let me put it this way, we have not seen, I will disagree on the fact that we're seeing lots of new growth in building. We're seeing new growth in building, however, we're not seeing an exponential spike that would offset, potentially offset this budget item. Remember what's funded by these dollars and these are the sections of our budget that are hurt the most in any economic up and down, or downturn at least. Police, planning, those components in the back office that we hear the most about as council members. It would be counterproductive, in my opinion, to decrease funding to those entities at this point. That said, I'm interested in statistics and I'm interested in data. We've thrown around a couple of things today that I think could be interesting to just learn more about. I don't have it at my fingertips, but so how, how significant was the economic impact in Shelton as a result of the pandemic? I mean, are we, I don't know. When, what authoritative source do we have to look at for that data? I don't believe we have that today. I believe there are components of it, but I don't believe there is a solid picture that outlines exactly what the economic impact. And by the way, the pandemic is not over with yet. Who the heck knows where we're gonna go in the next year? You know, again, yeah, the, the budget impact may seem insignificant. I also do recall there being a little bit of a process to reinstate ad valorem, once it's, once it is turned down, once we voted to not, to not accept it. I don't know what those procedures are. So again, I think it would be sort of counterproductive here, but I'm interested in the statistics. If we can put our hands on them within our current planning period, but yeah, I think, I think it would be more detrimental than, than effective here for those who are trying to recover from the pandemic simply because we're going to be cutting back, we would have to cut back services, I mean, right? We would have to cut back a level of service at some point. And I'm assuming those level of service impacts would have an economic impact to the city, far greater than likely what the pandemic has shown. But speculating.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I necessarily wouldn't call it a decrease. I would, I would call it not increasing some of these taxes. But I do like to see the data as well and, and the procedure for the ad valorem if we did not accept it this year.
Yeah, it's a, it's a procedure. It's something that comes to council. It's not something we do often, obviously, but it's certainly something we're capable of. The other, I'm trying to get you the numbers for the not taking percent of the property tax levy. So you'll have those. I know Terry mentioned it's 30, but I want to, I'd rather know than guess. So we'll, we will get you those and then I can tell you what the specific impact is. The other part is we don't know what the 1% is until we know what the valuation is. So in that, you know, we work with our partners at the county assessors office to get that information and insert it before your final consideration of the budget document. But as far as the process goes, our team here can easily handle that. It's, it's the impact in the current year and the impact down the road.
James, do you have something you want to add?
Yes, more than anything, I like where you're coming from though, Eric. And, and I love that you want to take care of, of the people in our community. I think that's great. And, you know, I'd like to know, I'd like to know the stats as well, a little bit more because, I mean, I'm hearing two different people say two different things that we're heavily impacted and we're not. So let's, let's look at data that shows us the truth and facts on that. And then like Jeff was saying, I'd like to know more about, not necessarily tabling it, but not losing it, but maybe not implementing it this year. So I'd like to know more about both those.
Yeah, and I can provide that information to you tomorrow in written. You know, I can write it out so you can kind of see how the process worked.
Deidre, are you next?
I was just gonna follow up and say that there was some really good information in the 2020 Association of Washington City State of the Cities Report, specific to the 1% cap, which has only been in effect since, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was like 2001. But in that, they talked about the fact that 93% of cities have said that that 1% cap has really been detrimental in their ability to address needs within their cities. And as we continue to have conversations about not only staffing, but what our core services are that we're offering and what that quality of service is, I just want to be really cognizant of the impact long-term to ongoing revenue because I know the cost of, you know, everything is going up. Not only technology, professional services, supplies, cost of living for our employees. Hopefully, we're doing talent acquisition and retention as well. And so we're not alone in this conversation. I completely, wholeheartedly agree with, with James that this is is nice to see Eric always thinking about the people who are our neighbors. But I think if we're being honest about our capacity as a city and how we're able to plan long-term financially, it may not be feasible in my mind at this point. But again, we'll have to wait and see what the numbers say. And I'll talk to Jeff too, so he can share that with the council members.
Kathy?
Um, it, thank you, Eric, for thinking of the citizens of Shelton. I appreciate it a lot. But sometimes when we think about the citizens of Shelton, we, we get shoved under the rug and there's consequences down the road for for actions as that. I'm thinking years ago, they, you know, I remember one mayor said, we will not raise the taxes on our citizens. Well, then we got pushed back on projects and we got into the hole, in deep into the debt hole. So when we had to do projects, so we just have to remember that we need to keep up.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
And Mr. Mayor, like I mentioned, I will have all that information for the council members tomorrow. And we'll have it in time for the presentation on October 5th. And this is, as you saw on the budget calendar, we'll have several more public meetings about the 2022 budget and two public hearings about it. So we have plenty of time to work on this issue and provide council with all the information.
Okay. All right, are we back to Dawn and Terry?
Okay. So, so we'll get back to it. So for the 2022 capital improvement, and we're talking about significant projects that we put in the slide. The Safe Routes to School is $890,000 project with $770,000 from a DOT grant. So a majority of that is paid through grant. The Western Gateways, 2.6 million for 2022. And we have 726,000 from TIB. And we're also including ARPA funds for this project. So those are the American Recovery Act dollars, which I'll talk about in the next slide. The Park, the Park's capital improvements totals 209,000. And these include a truck, a mower and possible property acquisition. And these are going to be reimbursed by SMPD, the Park District. And then we go to advanced metering for 800,000, so 400,000 would be coming from water and we would apply those ARPA dollars to that also. And the other 400,000 is from sewer, which is also ARPA dollars that we're allocating to. The well, one pipe replacement, it's $1 million. And that is 100% from the direct appropriation for Department of Commerce grants that we'll be receiving. The residential paving, 358,000. So 278,000 is going to be coming from the STIP funds that Mason County will be sending us. And then the reclaimed water tank design for $2 million. Again, that's from the direct appropriation grants that we'll be receiving from Department of Commerce. The EMNR equipment, that will be just using fund balance because it's, it's replacements that they've collected throughout the years to replace equipment for EMNR. So then the last thing is we have the security enhancements and signage for 60,000. So the security enhancements is the new keyless entry system for all city buildings. So it would be safer for the employees in the, in the buildings. And then the signage would include new library sign, which I think is important for, everybody knows where our library is. So the American Rescue Plan Act, our ARPA funds, the city will receive a total of 2.98 million in ARPA funds. We've already received the first half in 2021 and then we'll receive the second half in 2022. So then our capital utility infrastructure projects are required to be allocated to the ARPA funds by December 2024. And they have to be expensed by December 2026. And again, that's for our capital utility infrastructure projects. The 22, 2022 budget includes the following projects, which I mentioned in the earlier slide, the automated reader infrastructure for 800,000 and our Western Gateway for 1.34 million. So talk about COVID contingency. So this is gonna, it's our, the rest of 2021 and 2022 are going to be interesting, I think. It'll, you know, whether we experience a significant change in revenue, that's just going to be something we have to wait for. And basically, what's going to happen with the, for the vaccination requirements from the governor's office and how that will affect state workers and any other workers that it could affect. I think the school. And any other workers that it could affect. I think the school just came out to the Shelton Schools. Requirement too, so. And it'll affect those long term impact on spending habits. Then we have the President Biden's vaccination announcement that could potentially affect employers with a hundred more employees. And then we've already seen it to where our supply chain, our supply chain constraints. Are. Here and very present. We saw it with the paving project. We had to wait for supplies to come in. We had to wait for about a week. So and then increased costs that go along with that. We have vehicles on order, but. They're not expected to be in until next year, so. That wait time. Is important, because it, what what will it cost by the time we receive those products? So we prepared the twenty twenty-two budget with. The unknowns and but without significant assumptions related to them. If there are revenue impacts in the second half of the year, that will. It'll most likely be too late to change anything for our budget. But we'll closely be looking at that in the first quarter of twenty twenty-two. Again, our. Sales tax information is a two month leg, so we need to, you know, wait for the first. Few months of the first quarter and then really analyze those. And and see if we're off very much or if we're we're on track like we were this year, so. There's. It it can. Go both ways, anyway, so. That's all I have. Is there any other questions?
Is this an additional mower? Is this an additional mower that we just buy more? Or is this the same one?
For parks, they are requesting to purchase a mower. And again, this will be reimbursed by the S and P D.
We just bought a brand new mower this year. That's what I'm confused about.
That could have been for another fund. John, Don, do you remember?
So one of one of those, Councilmember Nisco, one of those is for. The roadside mowing, which has the the giant boom attachment. The the one this year, I believe, is for stormwater areas. To keep those mowed and up to date with our N P D E S phase two permit. Along with along with our parks. It's a different piece of equipment. They're both mowers, but they're they perform different functions.
No, I thought we bought a porch mower this year. Okay, and also, the ARPA funds, we had talked heavily in our retreat about using that. For economic development. So is that gonna be round two?
Yeah, we still have funds left over. We we are not expending all the ARPA funds. We're allocated the two point nine eight. We still have some left over and we wanna make sure those are targeted appropriately in line with council's expectations. And we are actively having conversations with our partners at Mason County surrounding that issue.
Oh, hey, sorry, real quick. Terry or Don, can you? Can you fill me in? What what does the city look at an F T E from? From an hour's perspective? Do you know that off the top of your head, or?
Or what, how many hours in the year, do you mean? Two thousand eighty, forty hour weeks. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, so. Who who really works two thousand eighty hours a year? I mean, do you guys have like a weighted late, a weighted rate of hours, total hours? Because you said we had over a hundred F T Es. That's not a hundred people per se, though. Over a hundred people, correct?
That would be, it is a hundred people. We have some. Any seasonal, like parks, parks employees are not in this count. These would be full time employees that we that we follow up with the F T.
I don't see any other hands. All right. Ready to move on? Does that conclude Terry and Don?
That concludes it for us.
And we will, we will make sure council gets that information tomorrow before lunch.
So you're taking us to lunch?
I eat lunch at five o'clock, so.
Jeff, you ought to take us to the strip. I I vote for the strip.
That one percent, though.
Okay, our next study item is a homeless encampment ordinance. City manager Jeff Knighton and public, I mean, police chief Carol Beeson have the details for us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. This is a topic that has been an issue in our community for some time. And we have been looking for ways to address the issue in a. A manner that's compliant with legal decisions in case law, and we have our city attorney Kathleen Haggard here with us tonight as well. But we also want to address it in a way that is compassionate. But still gets to the heart of the issue that needs to be solved, that the community has told us needs to be, I shouldn't say solved, addressed. This is part of a three-part strategy that we are using or that we are working on to address the issue. The first one here is the public encampments on public property. One you'll see in several months, maybe the first quarter of twenty twenty-two. Will be aimed at camping on private property, and that will be addressed through the updated code enforcement chapter that we are actively working on. And the third is a code or municipal ordinance that is designed to address camping in the right of way. So things like RVs, things like that. And then we'll look down the line and see what other facilities, what. Types of facilities that we need to provide to. Address this issue in a comprehensive manner. You'll notice tonight that the first part of the ordinance, this is about public camping. So it's people that set up shelters for overnight purposes, tents, and those types of things are defined in the very first part of the ordinance. And then how it can be enforced. And that is, again, with with an eye toward helping folks that are in homelessness and unsheltered situations. This is not necessarily to be punitive, but we have to have a way to to address this on public property. And we've provided this all to you. I will note, there are a couple of places in here where it switches from eight point two four to eight point seven four. Those are typos. We'll get those fixed before you see it at a public hearing. Coming up next month. But in 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 the whole, that's what this is intended to address. And Kathleen or Carol, if I missed anything, or you'd like to add anything, please do.
Jeff, I'd be happy to talk about why we made these changes and based on why this was a necessary part in our efforts. In Boise, Idaho, they had a law that was passed that basically said if a homeless person is camping on any kind of public property. There was no enforcement that could be taken against them unless there were proper shelter beds available for them prior to taking any enforcement. Part of the problem we have here, we have open shelter beds. But the problem is, is that when we offer them to folks, a lot of times they're not taking them. And the way our current. Municipal code is written, our our ordinance that we have right now, it's too vague for us to enforce it. So. While our purpose in doing this isn't to be punitive. There is a part where people have to be held accountable if they're not following the laws and they're not willing to take refuge somewhere else. We should be able to tell them, okay, but you can't stay here. I see a bunch of hands up.
On on the beds available, that is just, that's not a hundred percent true. Our shelters don't take everybody, and people get. Kicked out of our shelters for for many reasons, and so there is not an available bed. So those people that don't have an option. What are we gonna do? I mean, we have to address this problem. I I hundred percent agree, but I think criminalizing this would just put them in a circle. Like a, like driving on a suspended license, and then you get a ticket, and you can't pay the ticket, and then you get a warrant, then you don't go to court, and then you go to jail. And then you owe thousands of dollars for something that would have been thirty-five dollars. I don't I don't know if this is. The right direction. I don't know what the answer is, but.
Councilmember Nesco, if you'll let me give you an idea, there's a great article out of Aurora, Colorado, where the mayor went out and decided to close as a homeless person. To see what the real issues were. And what I find interesting about his article is that he went to legitimate shelters and sought out resources. And found that there were plenty of resources that were available if people were willing to go into that setting and and do what they needed to do. But he also found if he went into some of the camps that were in other properties, that those folks had no interest in getting resources, and they simply wanted. A place to either do drugs or. Have alcohol or do other things, and they just basically wanted to live off the grid. So you're absolutely right. We don't wanna be criminalizing homelessness. However, you know, we need to have both a way to deal with folks that genuinely want help to help end their homelessness. But if we have folks in our community that have no interest in that, we also need to have a way to address them. And we do have a significant portion of folks that aren't interested in any of those resources. They simply want to live off the grid. I'm not saying that punitive efforts are going to solve the homeless issue. They absolutely don't. But if you don't have some sort of punitive side to this. Then you're basically lawless in that people can kind of do what they want. And our purpose here is to make it uncomfortable for people to stay in Shelton if they don't want to follow our rules.
I I mean, I understand I understand that. I mean, I. I want people to be able to go to a park and feel safe and and walk down the sidewalk and not step on crap. I I get it, but. I don't know. We have mental illness. And no facilities for them. We have addiction, you know. I don't know if these people are going to comply, no matter what we do. So we're just gonna be adding to their problems.
That's part of the reason that this will be enforced in a compassionate way, where the first time we contact folks, if they aren't willing to take shelter. We're gonna warn folks, hey, you can't stay here in the right of way, or you can't stay here on this property and offer those resources, and then contact them again. And the second time, they will be cited for that. If it continues, then then we look at enforcement and actually incarcerating folks. But we'd also have to work with the court to make sure that what we're doing is in the spirit of the law intended, you know. You're you're right about people with mental illness and other people with drug addictions, and we're trying to work on that angle, too, with our navigator program through the county. So we're making sure that we have the available resources. But a lot of times people talk about people needing to find that rock bottom before they can get help. And right now, we don't have a carrot and a stick. We simply have carrot, and. Part of our fear is that if we have more resources coming in to help folks. Then and but there's no repercussions for anything that goes on in town. All we're doing is inviting more folks to come and be here. And that's the last thing that folks want. Every time I go to a community meeting, the things that I hear most often from folks. Is that they don't want to see us look like other cities that have a more significant homeless issue than we do. It's simply another tool in a toolbox. It's not the only tool.
I do think we need to have a conversation with our shelters about. Who who they take in or who they kick out for for what reason. Also, have we, Jeff, this is a question for you. Have we approved the conditional use permit for Community Lifeline to increase them to fifty beds yet?
I believe that the fire department and the permitting department are working on that, but I will double check on that for you. The other part of this, just as far as outreach is concerned, I did send this to community partners, including the county. And Community Lifeline, Turning Point, Crossroads, and the Sheldon Youth Connection. To receive comments, and we'll make sure that those comments are taken into account for. The final version of this. As I said, this is just a draft, and we're here for council to discuss what what you think and what direction we ought to go.
And I think there's something important to start with on this, that that. We we can't encompass all homelessness as one, just like. That this isn't for the person who specifically, but who who isn't. Who lost their husband or is sleeping in their car. It it's more of having some level of teeth for the people, like she was saying, that specifically don't want to comply. That they just don't care. I'm gonna shoot up on this bench and get drunk right here, and there's nothing you can do. That that's that's what a lot of these things are are kind of aiming towards more than the people that definitively need help, want help. And are seeking help, because there is a lot of help out there. And and kind of following up on that, if you get kicked out of a homeless shelter because you're doing things that you're not allowed to do in there. Well, then that doesn't mean you get to go do more things that you're not allowed to do and take that out on the community. And and falling back on things like licenses, like if you're driving on a suspended license, you're wrong. You you should have penalties after that, because you're breaking the law. I mean, I follow the law, you follow the law, Eric. We have to follow the law. If I get pulled over and get a speeding ticket, lose my license, I'm not gonna be driving tomorrow. And if I am, I expect if I get pulled over, I'm gonna get in trouble. Not just, oh, well, you know. I I'm messing up and I'm poor, so it's not illegal to be poor. Being poor doesn't mean you don't have to follow rules either. So just kind of getting the spirit of where these ordinance are coming into, they're not just this broad blanket of, hey, you're homeless, you can't be here. It's, hey, you're homeless, we have resources for you. Take them, take the help, and we're here to help you. If you don't want it and you want to defecate on our sidewalks, and you wanna pitch a tent in front of the businesses downtown, that's not the place for you. We have to have some sort of teeth to be able to remove that type of behavior. Spirit of these are for.
I agree. I mean, if you're breaking the law, you you should be punished. I mean, people having sex in our parks should go to jail. That didn't happen. I don't know why.
Exactly. So that that's a different problem than this, though, but like, just just understanding that we can't encompass homeless as. Isn't all the same. It's got different layers. And we're going after the the negative layer of this.
Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you. Just seeing a point of clarification here. Chief Beeson, you said, I think your first, your first sentence, I think you said something along the lines. That that basically. In camping in any any on any city property or any publicly owned property. You know, there's nothing we can we can do, right, with the Martin and the Martin v Boise decision. I don't believe that's correct, right? I mean, if we have people camping in unsafe locations where they're endangering themselves or others, we can remove them as well as. Camping within critical infrastructure, like our, you know, people can't legally with the Martin v Boise decision cannot camp at the sewage treatment plant. In, you know, beyond the fence line kind of thing, correct? Like, that still holds. Today.
Anytime somebody is putting themselves in some sort of danger, whether they're homeless or not, we can take action in order to to ensure their safety. So long as we can articulate where they're at is in such a place that had we not removed them, that bad things were gonna happen to them. But the vast majority of our city property would not fall in that. Purview. We have plenty of places where it's perfectly safe to camp. And presents problems for many citizens in our community. That's generally the the vast majority of the community meetings I go to. The the complaints I hear most often is that we aren't doing anything to address any of the homeless individuals that are camping in our community. And a lot of people are feeling that they're unsafe as a result of that. And again, like Councilmember Bode said, we're not talking about the people that are either. In need of help or the ones that are too mentally ill to know that they need help. You know, we need to have other resources for them. These would be the folks that are basically living in defiance. These would be the folks that are basically living in defiance of law, and they don't want to be subject to our laws. They're the ones that are really causing that kind of problem, and they would be the the people that we would be focused on if this law were to pass.
So one of the, go ahead, sorry.
Kathleen, did you have a comment about the unsafe space portion of Councilmember Schmidt's question?
Yeah, I agree. I don't think that's what we're talking about here. I think that restricted areas are always restricted areas, no matter what someone's status is with regard to accessing shelter. What we're talking about are things like parking strips, sidewalks, public parks in front of public buildings, areas that are not otherwise unsafe or restricted, but that we're not going to be making available for public camping as a matter of course, either.
So my other follow up, thank you, Kathleen. The other follow up, I'll be honest, I I Eric, I kind of went down the same path. I I fully agree, you know, this is, we cannot criminalize the fact that somebody's homeless. But we can criminalize the fact that somebody conducts a criminal act, right? Two things that came to my mind with this, I was reading through it. I actually spent a bunch of time bothering Jeff about this, and I I guess what I come to realize here is really what we're doing with this exercise is housekeeping more than anything. Our current ordinance does not fall in line with the Martin v. Boise decisions, and it's not currently a valid ordinance, right? So essentially, our hands are tied now, right? Because because our our current code does not support current federal regulation. So I understand this as more of a housekeeping step. The bigger picture items, how we how we solve homelessness, how we work on this, I yeah, it's it's not solved through, you know, the criminal side. There's a lot of components to this that we need to talk about prosecution, a jail, all those types of things as well that we know aren't there today. So and won't be for quite some time, right? So it behooves us to kind of be thinking about those proactive steps and those things that we can be doing in terms of a program related to homelessness. But I think more than anything, it's a good housekeeping step to make sure our our code is in line with current regulations, so we can go from there. So again, I I don't want to beleaguer the fact, you know, you know, this seems like we're focusing on the criminal portion of all of this, but I think more than anything, we have to, we have to have some teeth to our city code, and I think this is a good step to to starting that process. And then from there, let's talk about how we integrate with shelters and how we how we create options to, you know, work on this issue.
Councilmember McDowell, did you have your hand up a little bit ago?
I I did. I have a question about a word that's used on page two in the second paragraph, whereas the city council believes the rational and compassionate way of dealing with unsheltered homelessness is to assist, encourage, and incentivize homeless individuals. Can you explain to me what incentivize incentivize? I'm I'm thinking something else, like rewarding them or giving them. Is it giving them incentives to do something? And what would those incentives be?
I think this ordinance is in and of itself an incentive to take the resources that are being offered. Because there is a benefit, a perceived benefit to the person that is experiencing homelessness with resources that are available. But there's also a provision or there are provisions in the the document as it's written for I want to say punishment, but there are disincentives, if you will, if they don't take the resources that are offered. So I think there's no other incentives attached to this other than the way the ordinance is written. There are resources here. There are consequences here if you don't follow the rules.
Okay.
The only other thing that came up in my review of the document, understanding its draft, so just throwing this out there is we talk about you know, the prohibition, when it when we enforce the prohibition on public camping, it seems like it was very centric to a police officer. And I suggested to Jeff earlier that it just may be an appointed city official, doesn't have to necessarily be a cop out on the street, so maybe code enforcement or something posting notification or alerting somebody, hey, you can't camp here. And I think I think, again, I don't think this always needs to be a law enforcement function. I think there is definitely a law enforcement component to it, but I don't always, you know, I don't always think we need to burden law enforcement with with more social things related to, especially on this topic. I think if if we could work this through, thinking back to when we had a homeless outreach coordinator type of a position, the navigator program with Abe Gardner in the county is hearing good things about that. Again, I don't want to limit the authority to just law enforcement. In this case, I would like that to be a city official of some sort, more than more generalized on that front.
Councilmember Schmidt, I agree with you that the homelessness issue is certainly not just a law enforcement issue. But to points that have been made, there are many out there that are homeless that do have mental health problems that can make them unpredictable. There are several that have both alcohol and drug addictions that make their behavior more erratic. And in many cases, they feel threatened by others that are also homeless. So I see pictures from our code compliance officer on a regular basis where folks have ample access to hypodermic syringes that can easily be used as weapons, brass knuckles. I've gone out personally with her and disarmed people that had knives on them at the time. So while you're absolutely correct, it should not be solely a law enforcement problem. There is a component where there needs to be some safety in going into these camps to make sure that our code compliance folks or other city officials that might take on that responsibility can do so safely.
Absolutely.
Lots of hatchets and machetes are visible. Every time I do a cleanup, I I I see hatchets and machetes. They chop, they chop down trees. And I have had more than one aggressive when I'm cleaning up on private property around them coming out of their tents, holding their machete. So it's it's, you know, it's hard to see our code enforcement officer have to be the one that goes up and does that.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I'm not sure it was suggested that, incorrectly if I'm wrong, Councilmember Schmidt, but I'm not sure it's suggested that police officers not go, just that they're not, this action isn't limited only to police officers.
That was exactly my point.
Mr. Mayor. And if I can add, oh, sorry, just, I think the reason we made it so specific to police officers was just out of concern that if we ever had to litigate this, we would have a clean record, so we would have a law enforcement official who is specifically trained to apply this ordinance and could lay the foundation that all the necessary contacts were made and referrals were made before charging the criminal offense. Not that that necessarily has to be that way, but I believe that was our thinking when we drafted the ordinance.
Jeff and Chief Beeson, how often are officers retrained on trauma informed care? And then Jeff, for those staff that are out in community connecting with those folks who are houseless, are we providing professional development for them in trauma informed care? And if not, knowing that the police department does, but if our other staff are not being trained, is there an opportunity to do that? And also, what does it look like to bundle services together and, you know, reach out to our homeless shelters and have them, you know? Is there an opportunity for us if we have to go out and do code enforcement with a law enforcement officer? Can we then also bring someone who is a professional in trauma informed care to be able to help support and deescalate alongside?
So a couple of points to that, and I'll let Chief Beeson take one of them. But so we do partner with the navigator program with the county. How often do the services are available to the officers when they are making contact? I don't have the exact data on that, but we can certainly provide it. Chief Beeson has looked at scheduling within the police department in order to provide additional training days for our officers in during a regular work week so that they receive more training than they're able to now. We provide the training, but usually it falls, you know, somewhere when they're on a day off and they have to come in for overtime or something like that. So we are proactively, Chief Beeson's practically looking at that problem in order to address it and make sure we can get it fixed. And then the third one, as far as trauma informed care among our officers, I'll let Chief Beeson take that.
Councilmember Feas, I can tell you how many have that specific training for trauma informed care, so I will have to get back to you on that. But I can tell you that they are all trained regularly, and it was a required mandate in twenty twenty one for de-escalation training for every member of the department. And they they get that kind of training on a very regular basis. I know that in a lot of cases, when they are dealing with folks that are mentally ill, they simply do the triage portion of that to get them to one of our designated crisis response folks that do have that specialized training. So they're basically the the caretaker, if you will, until they can get that person to someone who can do a more in-depth analysis. And we've had several meetings with our mental health professionals to try to determine what kind of a partnership we can come up with to make that transition more efficient than it is now and have those types of services available more than just the regular nine to five that they tend to be available now. And and Abe Gardner is a great resource. And a lot of times, I know that if it's during the time he's there, he will come out and assist folks as his time permits. But he's also great at finding those other resources, kind of like a plug and play, oh, this person needs this, this is probably the right resource, and connect those folks and their families with the resources when they need them and the right resources.
And just, you don't have to answer this today, but if you were to have access to a trauma team, what would that look like? Again, you don't have to answer that today. I just want to throw that out there.
Sure, we can look, we can think about that and see how we can apply it.
Eric, did you have a comment?
Yeah, also, I know that Crossroads Housing also has a twenty four hour hotline that can be utilized that that can help people, not necessarily with like the mental part, but with distressed and family and things like that. So that that's definitely another good resource that I think a lot of people don't know about and utilize.
Yeah, I know our police department is aware of that and does utilize that that number quite often.
Awesome.
Alright, very good. Anyone else have questions or comments? Seeing seeing none. Study session is adjourned at seven oh three.